Welcome to the Southwood School Committee Meeting of Tuesday, November 14th, 2017, 7:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bishop.
President.
Ms. Duval.
President.
Mr. Lozo.
President.
Dr. Page.
Excuse.
Ms. Pellican.
Running late, she'll be here shortly.
Okay. Ms. Ryan.
President.
Mr. Domo.
President.
Six present, one excuse.
Could we all join me in the pledge of allegiance, please? Thank you. This time, we'd like to invite anybody from the audience who would like to come forward and address the school committee. If they would like to come to the podium, state their name and address, we'd be more than willing to and happy to hear from anybody in the audience. Once again, anybody would like to speak to the school committee?
Hi, I'm Jennifer Miskell. How are you doing, Mr. Bishop?
I know you. I had you. You were one of my students many years, a few years ago.
Yeah. Um, I've been trying to figure out my kid's bus stop. It's really far away from our house with, um, no sidewalks. And it's just dangerous.
Can I ask you, have you contacted the central office or the school?
I contacted everybody and, um, they just give me the runaround.
Okay. I'm gonna turn this one right over to the receiver.
Absolutely, thank you. Can you remind me your name, please?
Jennifer Miskell.
Can you, um, sorry, spell your last name for me?
M-I-S-K-E-L-L.
Great, okay, we'll follow up with you this week.
Okay, thank you.
And if you don't have satisfactory results, please start back next month, okay? Good to see you.
You too.
Anyone else from the audience who would like to, uh, address the school committee this evening? If not, we'll move ahead to discussion of minutes from our October 3rd meeting. Anybody have any corrections, additions, deletions?
Um, Mr. Bishop, through you, I have, um, one change, just a clarification. On page four, uh, third paragraph now, where we're talking about the, um, charter school in Sturbridge, I just want to clarify the, um, second sentence from, um, to say, she said, "We are already struggling and will now have a harder time because of this charter school." Just as a clarification.
Did you catch that? Thank you. Uh, we'll, we'll do a revised, we'll do a revised, thank you, Max. Any other corrections, additions, deletions we want to discuss? If not, we can move on to all business. I guess that's you.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Uh, so I'm very pleased that tonight we have Ms. Catarat and Ms. Murray, uh, from the, uh, West Street School, uh, who are here tonight to, uh, tell us a little bit about the field trip. If you recall, um, at our last meeting, um, Ms. Catarat came before this board and explained that she wanted to take the students from West Street School on a field trip to Nature's Classroom. It was our first overnight field trip to Nature's Classroom, and the board was very enthusiastic about the trip and asked if she might come back and, uh, update the board on how it went. And so indeed, it did happen on October 30th. Students came home on, stayed overnight on the 30th, just in time to be home for Halloween. Uh, and I would appreciate if Ms. Catarat could come up and, um, Ms. Murray as well and just tell us about the trip and, uh, and some of the highlights for the students and what they gained from this experience.
So we actually have a PowerPoint, um, but we can post it to the website and send it to the committee. Basically, we wanted to thank you for your support, um, and our PowerPoint has a lot of pictures for you because that's what we promised, so I can just kind of talk you through.
Ms. Catarat, I wonder, um, do you, would we want to take a minute and see if we can get the PowerPoint connected, or?
That would be fantastic.
Do we know if that's possible, actually?
I don't, uh...
Mr. Jimmin, would you like to take a five-minute recess to check? I'll make a motion for a five-minute recess.
Anyone would like to second that?
Second.
Okay, on a favor? Okay, at this time, we're gonna take a short five-minute recess if we can't get this, uh, up and running for us.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you, we're back. Once again, this is the Southwood School Committee Meeting of November 14th, and we were speaking with Principal Catarat and Assistant Principal Murray regarding the, uh, recent field trip they had, so why don't we continue?
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. So just to recap, the Charlton and West Street Schools have been going to Nature's Classroom in Charlton for day trips over the last several years. It has been offered to the students from the Nature's Classroom Coordinator for free for the day trips, and we had expressed interest last year in doing it overnight. And so with the help of classroom teachers in the fifth grade, um, and conversations with Nature's Classroom, they offered us a really good opportunity to try an overnight with our fifth graders. We presented that, and we are here to share out our experience, um, that the students had during their trip. So bringing you back, we just put together a few slides with some pictures of the students that went to the overnight trip on October 30th, so it was the night before Halloween. It was kind of a chilly day, um, but these pictures just show, um, what the students are doing, and Ms. Murray's gonna also share with you what their experience was like for the day. So here we are, packed up and ready to go. Students from West Street School were heading off in the morning for their Nature's Classroom overnight adventure. Students were bringing along with them just their overnight attire and, um, pillows and blankets. Just to give you a little background, um, we ended up with, out of eighty students, about forty students interested in participating on the trip, which we were really excited about. We did have several parent meetings where we invited parents in to speak with them. We had our school nurse day after. Faculty and representatives from Nature's Classroom who came out to assure parents that this is something that happens a lot and that they were equipped to take care of the students. We also, as a staff at West Street School, assured parents that there would be staff, um, from West Street School on site at all times. So, um, at nine o'clock in the morning, we had our students, um, they had breakfast in the classroom and attendance at school as usual. They boarded the bus at nine o'clock, um, which the AA Transport worked with us to also give us a really reasonable price for the round trip on the day of and the returning day. Um, I'd like to just acknowledge them for their support as well. Um, students spent the overnight Monday and then returned on Tuesday. Again, Ms. Murray will get into some of the pictures and what happened during the day on the trip. We'd like to acknowledge the teachers in the fifth grade who helped to organize and were on the trip with the students during the daytime hours, and that was Mrs. Hayes, Ms. Jositis, Ms. Horner, and Ms. Pucci. We did have teachers who offered to stay back. As a team, they made that decision that Ms. Lankto, Ms. Jordan Agillo, and Ms. Cicato would stay back and work on special projects that were aligned with students who opted out. So we did have school and students who were in attendance that didn't participate on the overnight. We had put a, um, asked teachers if anyone was willing or wanted to volunteer to come for afternoon or overnight, that they could reach out to Ms. Murray and I, and we would make arrangements with them. We actually had several teachers, um, third and fourth grade teachers who volunteered to go because they wanted to be with their fifth grade students, and it really, um, turned into a school-wide effort. So we would like to thank Ms. McKinnon, Ms. Wall, um, Ms. Murray and myself, and, um, other teachers who showed up, Kristen Hutchinson, was there anyone, like, some people ended up coming that didn't even sign up.
Ms. Jositis, again, stay for the after... Ms. Jositis stayed for the afternoon session, as well as Ms. Lynn Moran from grade four attended the afterschool, afternoon session.
So we kind of blocked it off between three and seven. We just wanted to keep our word to the parents that we would be there to support students and have a watchful eye over them. And then, um, as you can see, we had people also volunteer to sleep over. Ms. Murray and I committed to sleeping over from the beginning, as we did, and, um, we had a few other people volunteer. Mr. Dan Roy is our dean of students. He spent the night on the boy side along with Ms. Murray, who's brave, and, um, Ms. Casey actually volunteered, but we had so many people, and that's our school nurse. So we were really excited to see, you know, the variety of people who volunteered. Moving into just some great pictures of students who are engaged in outside activities, and Ms. Murray, I'll have you kind of flip through the next few because she was there earlier in the day than I was, so she really had an idea of what happened during the day, and then I can hop back in and tell you all about our nighttime.
So the kids were able to not only get used to the, like, the dormitory space, they, when they first got there, they had some time to just settle in and unpack and get the sleeping bags rolled out on the mattresses and everything. And then they got a chance to sign up for two different classes that afternoon, and then also two sessions for the following day. So they were able to choose from things like campfire making, salamander hunting, um, there was camouflage, there was one building a survival shelter, there was one where they camouflaged themselves and, like, crawled through the leaves and had to, like, keep away from the, the counselors that were there. So there were all kinds of different options during the day. This was the campfire building one. Later on, during the evening, they had what they call science fair, and there was this movable science fair, and, um, it seemed like they were really interested in, like, lighting things on fire because they lit a pickle on fire, they, they melted, like, a can, there were, like, all these different, uh, fire-type activities in the evening. So this is some different shots. They ate together, family style, for each of the meals that they were there, lunch, dinner, and breakfast, and lunch the next day. So the kids had to work together. There were children that were chosen to be waitrons, not waiters or waitresses, but waitrons, and they had to, uh, serve the rest of the kids, and then there were other kids chosen to, you know, help clean up, and they all pitched in together. So it was really interesting to see the kids do that kind of stuff. Sometimes we don't ask them to do things, um, but if you do, they step up, so it was great to see that. And then, um, we, we did afterwards, um, and you might have seen some of these, uh, floating around, but we asked parents' permission if we could videotape the kids' responses, and so some of our kids have done, like, little video journals about, um, their experience there. You want to talk about evening?
Yes, sure. Um, just, this was a slide that I wanted to put in. We, it goes back to us. Um, this was a memo. I send a weekly memo out to staff, um, internally. It includes, um, things that are going on academically, but this is where we got our volunteers from, asking them if they would sign up for the three to seven or, um, 7:00 PM. So we had started this work early on when we got the approval, so that it would be a school-wide effort, um, and so I just wanted to include that. I also, oh, I guess that was it for pictures, I thought I had a few more. I did want to update you because I, a few members of the committee had approached me and asked about fees. Again, Mr. Santos from the Nature's Classroom originally had quoted us for $1.35 for an overnight per pupil. Um, he wanted to, um, help us in making this happen since it was our first time, so we ended up getting him to agree to $40 for the night per, per pupil, and we were excited about that. So I just wanted to show you that when we, you know, we did put this out to parents, we did tell them we wanted everyone to go and that money was not an issue, that if they could contribute the forty, to please do so. If they could send fifty, that we would put that extra ten towards a child that may not be as fortunate. Um, and we ended up collecting $1,060 in cash, two fifty checks, um, and another eighty was, were checks that were made out to, um, Nature's Classroom. Some of them were made out to West Street School, but we ended up coming up with, um, whatever that adds up to be, but the total cost for the trip was $1,720. So the balance that we were left with, um, to either, you know, get funds or, um, use our student activity budget that we do have was only $330. So I just wanted to acknowledge those people who had said, like, "Hey, is there a child that I can sponsor?" Or sent in extra money. There were parents who said, you know, "My child doesn't want to go or is afraid to sleep over, but I'd like to cover the cost for someone else." So as Ms. Murray said, like, when we ask and we put ourselves out there, really good things happen. So, um, again, Ms. Murray talked about the evening. I thought I had a picture. They were, they had music, they were singing. Um, this, I only had pictures of the girl's side because we were all in our PJs, but, like, um, we had, it was just amazing. I am so grateful that we had the opportunity to give this to the students, but the adults that participated, you know, our work is hard and we care about our students, and it was awesome to be able to be with them in an environment where it was laid back, they were singing. Um, I've told this story several times, one of our students who, you know, really struggles with attention at school and could sometimes be, you know, kind of a wise guy, just looked up at me and said, "Mrs. Catarat, this is the best thing I've ever done." And I said, "Oh, it's the, you know, the best trip you've ever been on or camping," and he said, "No, this is the best thing I've ever done in my whole entire life, and I'll never forget it." And to us, like, that was worth the whole night of not sleeping. I think Ms. Murray had a little less. But anyway, we just wanted to thank you and share with you a few pictures. Again, if you look on our Facebook page, West Street School, there were live videos and, um, other postings about the day. So again, thank you so much for your support, we really appreciate it, and we will be hoping to do the same thing again next year. Um, and our friends at Charlton Street, Ms. Murray just spoke.
...at PTA tonight, they, they want to go.
Tell them.
So at PTA tonight, they were asking me, like, all about it, and how did it work, and were there any issues, and they want to join us next year, so they're looking forward to it, too.
Great. On behalf of the committee, I want to thank you ladies and all of your staff, and I'm glad the students had a good time. We definitely want to thank Nature's Classroom for their generosity, as well as our bus company.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments from the committee?
I would just also like to extend another, um, round of thanks to those parents who did give extra to help out other children. I think this is really awesome. This was, I was following those videos online when you were posting them, and it was really awesome to see the children having such a wonderful time, and this was just, I'm so happy this was, this happened, and it was great. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. Moving on, uh, at this time, we're very pleased that, uh, we, we have a high school student representative, Ms. Frances Garcia. Uh, I know her two older brothers, and if she's anything like them, we're gonna have a fun year. Congratulations, and we're looking forward to, we're gonna move right onto B, and let's, if you wouldn't mind, give us your report on what's going on.
Thank you. I actually have it on my phone because I was kind of collecting data all over the school.
Could I just ask you to pull the microphone down?
Oh, sorry.
So we can hear.
Thanks. Is that better?
That's much better.
Okay. So, um, homecoming was a huge success this year. There were over a hundred more students than last year participating in dances, all the activities, so that was like, like, a really, it was a really big change from last year because ever since I started high school, like, students just started not being interested in homecoming or the dances or any of that. So, um, we were just happy to see, like, student involvement. Um, the Student Council and Rotary Club were happy to participate in helping the town put up Christmas decorations. It also helped, like, a lot of students put, um, their, in their college applications, community service. Um, currently, we're getting ready for our annual Thanksgiving rally, which is super fun. Um, our theme this year would be sitcoms from the nineties. Um, the Student Council also wanted to, wanted me to tell you guys that they were happy to participate in washing police cars. They took, like, a little field trip over there and helped wash the police cars as community service. Um, a lot of students helped with the Halloween festivities for, like, I think it was West Street School or Charlton Street. They dressed up as zombies and stuff like that for the younger students. Twenty seniors, including me, were awarded that John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, so that was a really nice thing. Um, uh, now, students, I, I kind of asked around, like, what they wanted me to say because I didn't just want to put my input, and, um, I asked mostly, mostly the honors and AP classes because that's the classes that I'm in. And we feel like there should be, um, more training for the, for the teachers in their AP courses. We have a lot of teachers this year that they just kind of got thrown into teaching AP courses, and, uh, it, it's not their fault, I feel like it was just poorly managed, but, um, we just want that to be better for the juniors that are coming into seniors next year. Um, the students feel like there should be more student-teacher relationships because it's kind of hard to, like, make a teacher relationship because we've had so many, like, leaving and coming, so, um, most of our students have, like, that one faculty member that they're comfortable to talking with, so that's, that's a good thing, but we just feel like more teachers need to be, um, involved in, like, the students' maybe more academic lives, not really personal, but, um, a lot of students, I, I kind of told them that they should come to these meetings so they can voice their concerns because they feel like their concerns aren't being heard at our school by the administration, and so, they, like, parents have come in and complained about certain things, but we, we, I told them that they should just, like, come to these meetings or, I don't know, reach out to somebody else because, um, they feel like some of the concerns that they have are, like, really, um, interesting from what I've heard. So they, I just wanted to put that out there, and, um, they, um, I wanted to suggest, like, maybe for next year, if you guys, well, I don't know if it's you guys, but, um, if there would be a mandatory SAT prep class or, like, college readiness class, because this year for the seniors, again, with all the transitions with the teachers and stuff, it was, um, it was really hard to get ready for the SATs unless you, like, took an SAT prep. There wasn't that much focus on it this year, and I know colleges are kind of, like, opting out, but, like, me for nursing, I, I wanted, like, to get a certain score, but I didn't. So, um, I feel like if I would have had more SAT preparedness, and a lot of students in the, in the school feel that way, so I just feel like it would be great for the juniors next year if they had that, you know, like, opportunity to, so they could get good scores and all that stuff. Um, and overall, I feel like the safety in the school has gone much better than last year. They're still improving, obviously, but overall, I feel like it's getting somewhere, and, um, yeah, that's, that's pretty much it.
Well, it's certainly an excellent report. Uh, may I comment on, I think I can comment on a couple of things. I, I guess I can. Uh, it's to the AP classes. Teaching AP is, it takes years to become a good AP teacher, uh, and I'm sure that, I know we were, we filled an awful lot of new staff positions up at that school this year, or most of the schools, and I'm sure that over, the teachers who will be retained who are teaching AP classes, I'm pretty confident that the receiver, whomever it'll be at that point, will have, will send these, these educators out to summer training that AP offers, because it is, I mean, my, my best, I'm a high school principal in another district, my best AP teachers traditionally are those teachers who have taught that subject matter for many years. It is, it is a challenge, uh, there's a great deal of summer work, and we, we didn't, we weren't even fully staffed up prior to summer, so right away, I'm sure many of those classes are behind, but I'm confident that, uh, the state receivership will hear your concerns. Uh, I'm, I'm gonna ask the receiver, do, do we have, do we do the PSATs? Do we, do we have all juniors take the PSATs or something?
You know, I, I need to double-check on that.
Okay. I, I know, and again, this was ten years ago. Uh, when I was a principal at, at that building, all, all of the students took the PSATs, and I'm not sure that's the right avenue to take either, but, uh, I think we should make it, uh, I think it was pretty affordable as particularly the, the, the situation that the district's in. But I certainly would, uh, ask that we, we pursue that, whoever's dealing with curriculum issues, that we see if we can't do that. I'm happy to hear that you feel the building is safer. As school committee people, we, we constantly hear about condition, you know, concerns that we have with, with the safety of our students, because that's even more important than education from my standpoint. Uh, Mr. Lozo, you have a comment?
Yeah, um, welcome to the Southbridge School Committee. I've seen many, many school representatives come through. I've got to rank you on the first impression, one of tops. You actually articulate the message well. Um, you, uh, your mother and father must be very proud of you.
Thank you.
To get up in front of a board and in front of the community on television and to articulate that message and to constantly look through the lenses of a problem and a solution and "let's work on it" is a great, great approach to what's going on in Southbridge. I think you're what the doctor ordered as far as a student rep, and I welcome you. If there's anything I can do, give me a call, a phone call away, and I'll come up to the building.
Thank you.
Ms. Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop, through you. I would first like to say, say, welcome, Ms. Garcia. Um, I was a student rep at Intantasca for two years, so I know what it's like to serve on a school committee at a young age, and you, like Mr. Lozo said, you articulated your views very well, and I, I want to echo how important it is for a PSAT and SAT prep. I went through them and they helped me a great deal, but it was because my school district provided those resources for me, and I'm hoping that the school district will continue to provide those and expand those resources for the students, so that way our students do do better because they deserve the world. So I'm really excited to have you on here, and I look forward to your comments and your insight going forward.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Once again, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Domo.
Yeah, that's all right. I was yesterday morning at your, your breakfast for you people, the seventeen of you that received that scholarship, and I want to congratulate you. It was very nice, and I'm welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Okay, if we have no other comments, we're gonna move on to a report from the Curriculum Advisory Subcommittee. I believe, uh, Ms. Pellican has, Mrs. Pellican has that?
Do you want me to read the minutes?
Uh, I think we could just, give us a short synopsis would probably be in order.
Okay, I can summarize the minutes.
That would be wonderful.
Okay, uh, let me find them.
Did I skip you? No?
Okay, I found it. Um, okay, so the Curriculum Advisory Subcommittee meeting met on Wednesday, the 18th, at 4:00 PM. Uh, in attendance were, um, Mr. Johnston, the receiver, um, Ms. Duval, and myself from the school committee, and Beth, um, I'm sorry, I don't know her last name.
Champion.
Champion, the curriculum coordinator.
Elementary.
Elementary curriculum coordinator. Uh, so first of all, we, um, talked a little bit about the role of the Subcommittee. Uh, Mr. Johnston stated that it's important for the school committee to have a good sense of what the district is doing in terms of teaching and learning, uh, and even though we can't vote on, um, this issue, it's important because the school committee, uh, still has a role in terms of informing the decision-making process. Um, and our plans for, um, going to these meetings is that we would be meeting with a curriculum coordinator and then later on with, um, various principals to give, uh, the school committee members a sense of where they are, um, in the school improvement planning process. So, uh, next after that, we discussed the MCAS scores and accountability results, and I believe, um, that's actually coming next under New Business, so I'm not gonna get too much into that right now because it would be redundant, so stay tuned, and you'll hear all about our MCAS scores. We did discuss the elementary curriculum update, um, and we discussed the new, uh, elementary curriculum for the elementary schools. They're moving from the MyMath curriculum to the Engage New York Math curriculum. Uh, they have worked to develop, uh, curriculum maps for grades one through five and common assessments. Um, it was noted that we still need to coach teachers on using the new curriculum, and we also need to bring kindergarten on board as well. Uh, we also discussed that this process will be happening, um, on the coming year towards, um, the ELA curriculum. Currently, we're using National Geographic for English Language Arts, but we're going to be transitioning to the Being a Writer program because, uh, we felt that National Geographic was not rigorous enough for writing. Um, we also discussed adding a new reading baseline assessment, uh, called Fountas and Penel, uh, which features, uh, leveled literacy libraries, which are a strategic, uh, method of increasing literacy level by level. Uh, that's, uh, oh, and, uh, so this past year, we did math, uh, and this year, we're doing ELA, and then in the coming year, we'll be focused on the science curriculum. Uh, and then that's it. Any questions?
Thank you, and thank you to all the members of that committee. Uh, let's see, moving along here, time for the receivers' updates. Dr. Johnson- Dr. Johnston.
Great. Thank you very much, and I'd actually like to invite Ms. Katerat back up because we're going to kick things off by actually having an update from Ms. Ferick, who has a few items, including our central enrollment system that we've actually just recently launched, the new after-school program that both Ms. Ferick and Ms. Katerat can speak to, and then I'll come back in to talk about MCAS results. So Ms. Ferick, if you wouldn't mind beginning with the central enrollment, and then Ms. Katerat, if you could come up when we start to talk about the after-school program. That would be great.
Well, as of yesterday, our new community liaison position was hired, and she's going to be a week and a half of training, and on December 4th, we're going to fully launch centralized registration at 25 Colab. This is a process that is many months in the workings. It started back in the spring, and it's really to streamline the enrollment process for families. Currently, as families come into the district to enroll their students, if they have students that are in elementary, middle, and high school, they're going to three different secretaries, three different buildings to enroll their students. This is streamlining the process. It's all going to be done at Colab with, on a really triaging the enrollment process and identifying what students' needs are. If there is an issue that a student needs ELL services, the ELL department's going to be immediately notified. If there's special ed concerns, the special ed department. Within, the goal for timing is, once the packet is complete and it gets handed off to the school, a student will be in a classroom seat, no later than 48 hours. And that's the expectation that that's the way it happens. In addition to the role of centralized registration, this person is a highly skilled translator and going to be taking on all of the district-wide and school-based translation of documents and conducting special projects for different administrators.
One thing to add to that is that very often when we have, for example, one family going to three different schools, it really increases the chance of error in the registration process, and those errors cost money. When we have one person who's highly trained to make sure that we enroll students accurately and get the right data on students, then we can make sure that the count that's needed for the state in terms of economically disadvantaged or English learners or special education is done very correctly, entered into the system correctly, and then we can follow that. So this is a position that we feel like is very much in the financial benefit of the district, in addition to all the positive things. It is better for families, it's much more convenient, much more supportive. Those are all very important benefits, and a financial benefit is also included as well. So certainly welcome any questions that the committee might have about that new person that you should hopefully come in, and you'll see her when you first walk into the building. She'll be sort of available to greet people and be that welcoming face of the central office as well. So we look forward to you meeting with her.
And she's a really strong community member. She graduated from Southbridge Public Schools. She's worked at UMass Medical for over 17 years and really had a passion for coming here and giving back to the community.
Does this person have a name?
Yep, Anna Aponte Ortiz.
Great.
Thank you.
So Ms. Katerat, if you wouldn't mind coming back, and Ms. Ferick, if you wouldn't mind introducing the all-in program, and then Ms. Katerat can pick it up, too.
Before I introduce the program, I genuinely want to thank Kathleen and Maria for truly knowing not just their students, but knowing their families and knowing their community. What got developed, honestly, within a six-week period is really profound, and the impact it's going to have on families of West Street School and Charlton Street School is really significant. It came out of a conversation, honestly, that was started out as almost a problem. The YMCA bus was late picking up kids, really was thinking about how can we service our kids? How can our schools become hubs for the community? And out of that, thinking of a problem, what could a solution be? A really amazing multi-community partnership has blossomed into 60 students just about receiving programming after school from 3:00 to 5:30 with no cost to them, and we have a huge waiting list. So, thank you.
You're welcome. You stole the words right out of my mouth. To repeat what Mr. Lazo said to the student representative, that it really did start with having a problem, and Ms. Murray and I have been working together as administrators for three years now, but both of us have been dedicated to the district for over 20 each. And so we are used to being handed lemons, and our idea was that if we were going to be trying to monitor the students after the school day, that we should just open our own after-school program. And it was a message to Ms. Ferick, I think in a late August or early September meeting, and she kind of looked at me and said, "Are you serious? You would do that? Put a proposal together." So Murray and I sat one day after school and figured out if we had this many kids and we charged this much, how would it be? And then when she came back, she said, "Oh, no, I meant for free. We have to do this for free." So she looped in Javier Gutierrez, our family liaison, who has been amazing at making connections in the community. And so we did, we had several meetings with different partnerships. So I'd like to acknowledge that we had Mr. Rosenthal from the Southbridge Recreational Department join us. We have the YMCA as one of the partners. New Hope Community Connection is one of the partners. UINC, the Southbridge Community Connections, Our Bright Futures Incorporated, along with West Street School with the support of Southbridge Public Schools, just opening our doors and wanting to make West Street kind of the heart of the community is what we've been campaigning ourselves as this year. We're centrally located, and we do have a need in our location that we recognize. I worked at Charlton Street for a long time, and there's many more walkers and pickups in the West Street side of town. Certainly, we think that this would be a fantastic program for all elementaries because we do have several students who are walking home or going home in the afternoon, and so we offered to pilot it this year, and we're hoping that, we're not hoping, it will be successful and that we will be able to secure funding so that programs like this can be at all elementaries, so that we're not sending our students home at 3:00 when we know parents are working or just getting, you know, ready to come home from their own night shift and also giving the students enrichment opportunities. So the partners all met, we drafted up a plan, and again, as Ms. Ferick said, within a very short period of time, we created this program that we decided we were going to name, and because we were all in and all participating, that kind of became the catchphrase for the program. So we are now offering all-in Southbridge after-school program at West Street School. It began on November 6th, so we're going into our second week. We're offering that throughout the year. It's Monday through Friday, which is really awesome. The different partnerships have actually gotten together, so that, an example would be the recreational department is providing the offerings on Tuesday, Thursday, and Community Connections and Bright Futures is providing it on Monday, Wednesday, and the YMCA is offering the Fun Fridays. So it doesn't end up being a financial burden on each individual organization. They've all come together to support the program. We offered training at West Street School for all of the faculty that are participating so that the teachers or the staff from the programs that are working with the students know what the West Street way is and that we're Wildcats and we're respectful and responsible so that what they're doing after school can help support what's going on in school. The program is free to Southbridge students, so it was opened up to grades two through five as a beginning for both elementary schools. And again, I have to acknowledge AA Transport, who is helping us with the transportation when they're picking up students from Charlton Street. They are swinging by West Street to drop off. I believe we have 12 students from Charlton Street that are taking advantage of the program. Ms. Ferick already said that, I believe, we had to, we did have to create a waiting list. So we probably have at least 25 or 30 students that we had to turn away because we only had enough staffing to safely monitor and provide services for the student, for approximately 50-some students. We have learning opportunities and academic support. Each of the organizations is providing things like sports, team-building activities, I think a woodworking person was coming in today, community service projects, all different types of enrichment activities that the students can participate in. So we're really, really excited to be a part of this after-school offering for students and hope that this will grow in the future. So if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them if I can.
No, I'm good. Anybody have any questions? Mr. Lazo?
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Nice. Ms. Pellican.
I just wanted to say thank you so much for all of your hard work on this program. My daughter is attending it, and she comes home like super excited to tell me every day about what she's done, and she's having a fantastic time, so thank you so much.
Excellent.
Ms. Ryan.
Thank you. I just also want to say thank you. This is a really awesome opportunity for so many students, and I look forward to it being expanded. This is a way to get students and families who feel so disenfranchised lately to be reinvested in the district, and I'm really excited about this, and I'm looking forward to it being expanded, and hopefully in the future, there'll be no waiting lists, and all these students will be able to access all these opportunities. So thank you so much.
You're welcome. And again, it was certainly a group effort by all partners, and again, on behalf of Ms. Murray and myself, thank you so much for supporting us. We appreciate it.
Mr. Lazo.
Just a quick comment. Great program. I like the way it's worked with everybody's taking ownership and a stake in the movement. But I'd just like to take a minute to thank you and Mrs. Murray for your leadership. Providing leadership in the school district is very important. That is where it starts. And then after pulling everybody together, I mean, you possess that, Mrs. Murray, thank you very much, the both of you. After the last presentation and this one, you know, fantastic leadership, and it's good to see it in the Southbridge school system. Thank you.
Great start.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Ms. Katerat.
Thank you so much.
Before we move on, Dr. Johnston, as we're right at the beginning of budget preparation for next school year, I'm sure we're well underway, is there any plans for us to perhaps channel some funds to expand this to the other elementary school?
So actually, one of the things that we would want to do, and I think the success of an in-district solution helps us to apply for a 21st Century grant that I think the district would actually be well poised to receive so that we could have outside funding in order to make that happen.
Great, that's good news. Thank you.
Definitely. So next up, actually, I want to move in. Thank you, Ms. Ferick, I appreciate these updates. So the next thing that I want to do is to look at MCAS results with you. And so if you look in your packet, you have a fold-out document to look at so that we can go over the results by school, keeping in mind that these results came out after our last meeting, and so this is our first opportunity to look at these results together. It takes a little bit of interpretation, so I'm going to walk you through it and help you know what to pay attention to on these pages. And so let's start at the top, looking at the, looking at the high school. So you can see under the 2017 Accountability Profiles tool, we're looking at Southbridge High School. So keep in mind that grades three through eight took the new Next Generation MCAS test this year. The high school maintained the legacy assessment, so they took the same MCAS, the same type of MCAS that high schools have been taking for many years now, and they will continue to do so up until 2019. So let's start by looking at the growth of the high school. So skip down to where it says SGP, Growth. We're looking for, in 2017, notice that there are no numbers for previous years because this is the first year that the high school, again, is its own building. So we don't have growth comparisons for previous years at the high school or the middle school. We do for Charlton Street and for West Street. But, so we have one year only. What we would consider normal growth is anything between 40 and 60. And so we're looking for a growth score between 40 and 60. As you can see in English Language Arts, we would call that high growth at 67. In math, that would be typical growth at 51. We'd call that positive, and we're pleased to see that, that type of result. The percentage proficient in English Language Arts is 76%, mathematics is 49%, and science is 38%. To the right of where I'm reading off to you, so this is how many students are actually proficient or higher on the, those assessments. And you can see that there's a discrepancy between where the high school is and the state average. But there is, what you can't see from within this, the way that I have it presented here, is that we had obviously 10th graders take the test in 2016, and they took it again, obviously, in 2017. So when you just look at 10th grade results, not school-level results, but 10th grade results, go back to math and notice the 49% of students who are proficient, that had been 35. So the year before, it was much lower, significant increase in the percentage of students who are now proficient in math. So that's trending in the right direction, for example. Math and, I'm sorry, ELA and science are pretty flat. There wasn't a huge change from 2016 to 2017. But math saw a significant spike, but we're not resting on our laurels, there's still a long way to go. As we look down, there's more information here about, then conversely, how many, what's the percentage of students who are warning or failing, and you can see that information there. Going down a little bit further, our English learner results, so this is a different assessment called Access, and we can see that 7% of the students were proficient in MCAS and 17% making progress. So more support needs to be focused there for our English learners. On the right-hand side of the, of the information here, take a look at the school percentile. So if you're looking under accountability data, it's a Level III high school, meaning that it's in the lowest 20% of all high schools in the state under the former accountability system, and its actual percentile rank is the ninth percentile. So please stop me as I go if there are any questions about the high school, otherwise we'll turn next to the middle school.
I just want to ask a question on the science scores.
Sure.
Are those just 10th grade, or are we administering 9th grade tests, too?
Yes. So 9th graders start, and then, so the, this is for the, so this science score, for example, if a student took the test in 9th grade, the results are for when they are in their 10th grade year.
I understand that. But we, we're giving, we're giving a biology test in grade 10, and we're giving the...
Technology, science...
Yeah, I know what I'm thinking of, I just can't say it right now.
Right, exactly.
We're giving a separate test.
Science, technology, engineering, yes.
Will we be able to get those broken out so we can see how those results are?
Sure, if we'd like to see that. I've actually never disaggregated that, so I'm not, I'll find out if it's possible. So turning to the middle school. This, so now we need to look, forget everything I just told you about how to look at these charts, we need to start over. And this time, now we have the results on the new assessment system. This is not the legacy test, this is the second gen, the next-generation assessment. So on this particular page, we're going to start on the right-hand side, and what ESE produced this year is an achievement percentile, because we don't have accountability percentiles the way that we just said the high school, for example, is in the ninth percentile. We don't actually have that information this year for our schools. And so because this is a baseline year, and so the bottom line is that we wanted parents to be able to compare and community members to be able to compare how schools are doing on a relative measure based on their results. And so on the upper right-hand side, you can see that we have the English Language Arts, a percentile, an achievement percentile, and a math achievement percentile. And basically what this says is, if you took all of the schools in the state and said, "How does this school's performance compare on the test in terms of the achievement of the students on the test? How does this compare to all other schools in the state?" So in English Language Arts and in math at the middle school, we are performing in the third percentile. So that means that 97% of schools in the state performed higher than the middle school in English, English Language Arts and Math. Going over on the left side, go to Growth, and notice that, remember how I told you that Growth, we're looking for 40 to 60 being normal growth or positive growth? The middle school's at 33 and at 26 for English Language Arts and Math. and math. And 11 percent of our students are proficient in science. That's the old assessment that still exists, the legacy assessment still exists for science. So 11 percent of our students proficient in science. And then taking a look at our English learners down at the bottom under Access, 6 percent proficient, 10 percent making progress. So still a lot of work that needs to be done at the middle school. Ms. Sweetman and her team maybe weren't entirely surprised by these results. They knew that they had more work to do. They've been very diligent about taking on the improvements that need to be, need to be made in the school. They've really embraced the extended learning time, for example, this year at the middle school, so that we have, you know, more time with our students this year, which has allowed us to have our core academics, plus every student has, at the end of the day, an intervention block. And so that we can help to remediate and accelerate students where we wouldn't have normally had that opportunity before. So certainly, it might be important for the committee to hear more from the middle school at a future meeting about the types of changes and improvements that they're making. But wanted you to know kind of factually where they stand based on this first implementation of the new assessment from last year.
So am I to understand that the middle school is going to school longer?
Both the elem-
The elementaries and the middle school are going to school longer?
That's correct.
Okay.
Turning now to West Street School. So again, in the upper-right-hand side, compared to other schools in the state, West Street in English Language Arts is at the sixth percentile in English Language Arts and the eighth percentile in math. Go to the left-hand side and look under Growth. Notice, very positive, and I'm very pleased with the growth results at West Street School. So we can see that although the absolute achievement remains lower than what we'd like, the positive news for West Street is that students are improving, which is what we can see in those growth results of 50 and 63, or 51 and 63. So pleased to see that. 21 percent of students, though, proficient in science, and so knowing that we want to make even further improvements there. So for example, this year, Ms. Kaderad and her team brought in STEM as an additional curriculum opportunity for students this year. And so I'm confident that we'll see better results in these science scores as we go forward. And then looking down on our Access results, 20 percent of students in the school who are English learners are proficient, and 49 percent making progress. So more encouraging results for our students who are English learners in that school. Turning next to Charlton Street. So again, on that relative measure of performance on the upper-right-hand side, we can see that 13 percent, the school scored in the 13th percentile on English Language Arts and the 16th percentile in mathematics. So then looking on the left-hand side, again, similar to West Street School, we see growth that's in the positive range or the normal range for growth. And pleased to see that, we know that students are improving. There's value added to their educational experience based on the results that we see there. Going down, 17 percent of our students proficient in science, and relative to our English learners, 22 percent are proficient and 53 making progress. So I know this is a lot of data to take in, but wanted you to have this information, and certainly welcome any other questions that you might have.
Are there any questions from committee members?
Just one comment. Do you think you could get a font just a little bit bigger than microscopic?
[laughing]
Thank you very much.
Yeah, awesome. We will, we'll look into that. We wanted to save the paper. I will mention, though, based on, on, hearing feedback from the committee and a request to receive information in a more timely way, we did give you our notes ahead of time in a nice big font here as well, as well as these MCAS results. And I do apologize for the small font. But responding to your requests to get more information ahead of time is what we endeavor to do for this meeting. So I hope that's, that's...
I appreciate that.
Yeah, it was greatly appreciated. We had a chance to look it over over the weekend.
Yeah, good.
Good.
So just a few more highlights. We've already mentioned the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship winners, and great job, Ms. Garcia. Our student arrivals from Puerto Rico, Ms. Ferick, we're actually at 31 now. Is that right?
Yeah, as of Thursday.
As of last Thursday?
Yep.
Great, thank you. So 31 new students from Puerto Rico.
Are they proficient in English?
No, no. We wouldn't, we would expect that, you know, our newly arriving students would be English learners.
Okay, thank you.
Please.
I'm sorry. Somebody had a comment, question?
Professional Development Days have gone well, the last one and a half that we've had. I continue to visit schools. I'll be at West Street School this Thursday. Looking forward to it. We go to about one or two schools a week, so that we hit every school each month. Some great events that have happened in our schools, in addition to the ones you've already heard about tonight. Hispanic Heritage Month was celebrated in all schools, the Veterans Day programs, and we appreciate the school committee members who were able to make it to our Veterans Day programs. And our Thanksgiving Day game against Bartlet is coming up with the traditional bonfire the night before. And continue to encourage your, your attendance, which we very much appreciate. We've been working with the police and fire department to have lockdown drills planned for our schools. They are unannounced. So for example, recently, we had a lockdown drill at the middle school and high school. We plan more for the remainder of the district. You had asked previously about our school improvement plans, and they will be posted online by November 30th. The survey results actually relates to the more late-breaking information that we sent to you, which are the results from the family, student, and staff survey that we sent out. And so Ms. Golikson emailed this to you on Monday. And for the purposes of tonight, I just wanted to remind you that you have West Street School's results, really just to orient you to this information. We think this is rich. We think it's very helpful to know what our students, our staff, and our families know and are experiencing about our schools. I'll be coming back to you. This is a two-parter. I'm coming back to you in December to discuss the results of the entire district with you. But for the purposes of this meeting tonight, we wanted you to just get a sense of, a reminder of, you have two things that we've emailed to you. One is the survey itself that was given to parents. So you can see, what were those questions that we asked? And then how does that translate into results? And so if you would, maybe further acquaint yourself with those documents, and in December, we'll pick this up again and talk about it further in addition to what we're doing about it. So look forward to that. Couple other really quick things. We had our first superintendent's roundtable meeting with a focus on the core values. That's something that's described in the turnaround plan. I'm really excited by how far we got in that meeting, and the student input was phenomenal in that meeting, and appreciate that we have two school committee members appointed to that committee. So we'll keep that going. We have meetings set in subsequent months coming up. I believe our next meeting is in, is in December. And finally, well, second to last, I want to read out some outstanding donations that we've received. First, really blown away by a $10,000 donation from Southbridge High School graduates, Regina and Jesse O'Brien, who were graduates from '96 and '95 respectively. They gave $10,000 to the high school BAM program. And Dr. T. plans to use the donations to purchase additional instruments. In addition, we appreciate that the St. Michael's Romanian Orthodox Church has provided a box of healthy snacks to Charlton Street School and West Street School in alternate months. 20 desktop computers from the Social Security Administration were provided for the new after-school program. And art supplies came to West Street School from Charter Communications. We had a $500 donation to Charlton Street Schools, Charlton Street School family events from United Lens. And this is what we received. I think it's also important to know what we gave. And all schools participated in Southbridge for Puerto Rico collection effort. And Ms. Ferick, would you like to add anything on the collection effort? Because I really appreciate what was done there.
It was truly an amazing experience to be part of. The, the Puerto Rican community was doing a lot of pockets, a lot of small pieces of work that families and neighborhoods were pulling together and getting donations. And then there was an organization of, of women and men who wanted to do something for the whole island of Puerto Rico. And they pulled together constituents from their community and actually reached out to the school department. I went to one meeting, got Dr. Johnson's approval to do whatever we needed to support the initiative, and it really ended up being a whole community response. The school, the school department helped facilitate getting drop-off boxes at all the schools, all the municipal buildings. The facility department for the, for Southbridge Public Schools, daily, and if not daily, every other day, picked up the, the offerings so it wouldn't collect and become cumbersome in the buildings, dropped them off. It ended up being, I think they raised over $20,000 in cash, and I think it was 30 tons of food that was sent over. They got the National Guard to come up and pick up all the food and deliver it at no cost to anybody in the community. It had a tremendous impact.
Thank you, Ms. Ferick. Finally, I promise, finally, in terms of staffing updates, the receiver search is underway, and Mr. Matt Brunel finished his, the report on what he learned from the community engagement process. And so we did attach that for you to be able to see. And the, the posting has gone up, and we will continue to update you as that progresses. We have a change in the director or the principal for Southbridge Academy. Mr. Michael Jarvis is the new principal. We already talked about our community liaison specialists. As Ms. Ferick updated you previously, that Anna Aponte Ortiz is handling all school registrations. And we've also worked to increase the pool of day-to-day substitute teachers. So thank you. That's my report for tonight.
Great. I'd like to comment on the $10,000 donation that Jesse O'Brien and Gina Robo donated. I had both of those two students for four years in the band program back in the nine, early 90s. Jesse was trombone player. He went on to my alma mater, Berkeley College of Music, graduated. He's successful in Boston. Gina was also an outstanding woodwind player. She played four years for me. She was a member of the Central District Band, the Massachusetts All-State Band, as well as the All Eastern Band. So she had some great musical skills. The O'Brien family, which married into the Bordelai family, was a major contributor for our schoolchildren when they ran Southbridge livery. There was never a time when they weren't willing to come up with a bus when we needed one, free of charge. And they also did a, I can't tell you how many uniforms they've cleaned for the band when they also owned a laundry service. So I want to thank Gina and Jesse, two great kids. Of course, they're knocking on forty now, so I guess they're not kids anymore. But thank you, and thank you to those families. And we're going to move on now to, wow, next meeting date already is going to be December 12th, 2017, at 7:00 p.m. Okay, and how about, we'll move on to item seven, Members Forum. Ms. Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. I just wanted to give an update. Me and, I'm sure Mr. Vall also have some comments to make about this. Me and her went to the MASCE conference in Hyannis this year. It was a great opportunity. I have always loved MASCE. I think they're a great organization and resource for school committees across the Commonwealth. We had a great time. A lot of interesting items for the delegates this year. But overall, it was, it was a great opportunity to continue to build on my knowledge and expertise in education policy, and really grow as a person and as a school committee member. It was, went to a number of panels, some on government transparency, which I will be eager to actually send over to Mr. Johnson, and really hope to increase the transparency of this receivership overall for the community. And also just learning more about what we can do in a very diverse community to get students and families engaged in our educational system. I really appreciated it, and I look forward to going in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Vall.
I want to thank you people for allowing us to go. I only could attend for two days because I had something else come up. However, when I did attend, I was very impressed that most of the items that I, most of the sessions that I, I attended had things to do with the opioid crisis and depressions in the school systems around the state. Is there anything being done to help here in Southbridge?
Sure. You could audit them for us to follow up on, but things like having Mr. Chris Heron come and speak with our students, as I reported on previously, plus the increase in the guidance staff and the adjustment counseling that we've seen since the beginning of the receivership are two specific things that have been done to make sure that we're reaching more students more regularly.
I mean, I attended six workshops, and five of them were these two items that kept coming up all the time. And so it is a big problem, and I hope something gets done good. I also have another thing that I want to, I was remiss last month in not mentioning about the, and thanking the students and the faculty who helped put on that four-one-act plays at, at the middle school last month. I thought they were excellent, and I wish you would, if you can, please extend our thanks for, for their help and all the expertise that they did. It came out very well. I really appreciated it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vall. Anyone else have anything? Mr. Lozal?
All set.
Okay. Well, on behalf of the committee, I want to wish everybody a restful and happy Thanksgiving coming up. Hope to see as many folks as possible at the Thanksgiving Day game. And everybody have a safe and enjoyable holiday. Thank you. And I'll make, take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor? See you next month.